Good morning, everyone. It is 10:00 AM and I will call this Board of County Commissioners meeting to order on May 27, 2025. We'll start with a salute to the flag. If Manager Brown could please lead us.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll now move into our roll call. Madam Clerk.
Alexis Hill, Chair.
Here.
Jane Herman, Vice Chair.
Here.
Commissioner Clark.
Present.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Andriola.
Present.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
And Chief Deputy DA Mike Larch.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galacini, your County Clerk. Madam, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move into Item Three, Public Comment. Manager Brown.
Item Three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Unused time may not be allocated to other speakers. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments that may be made to the commission as a whole, virtual public comment, may be taken when facilities are available. A speaker's viewpoint will not be restricted, however, reasonable restrictions may be imposed upon the time, place, and manner of speech. Irrelevant statements, unduly repetitious statements, and personal attacks that would objectively antagonize or incite others are examples of speech that may be reasonably limited. The Board of County Commissioners carries out the business of Washoe County and its residents during its meetings. The presiding officer may order a person to be removed if the person's conduct or statements disrupt the order or safety of the meeting. Warnings about disruptive conduct or comments may or may not be given prior to removal. Furthermore, certain disruptions of a public meeting are criminal acts as defined under NRS 203.090 and/or NRS 203.119, which may result in prosecution in appropriate cases.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
First up, we have Terry Brooks, followed by Bill Miller.
It's me, Terry Brooks, again. I've tried to come up with a conclusion, but I'm afraid that all I have now is a lack of a conclusion. I keep hoping that the problem of homelessness will stop and will see a reverse, but I can't help but suspect that the problem will keep getting worse. We could see a lot of employment taken over by a lot of robots, and it will probably be robots that wind up making more robots. We, as a people, will keep on reproducing too, but when robots wind up taking all the jobs, then what will humans do? If humans eventually do not see any chance of occupation, why would they want to waste their time trying to get an education? People could just ask robots to answer all their questions and then would probably receive answers as well as some suggestions. When it comes to housing, there's only so much land on earth, and it will never grow like the human rate of birth. Humans have always gone through various phases of adaptation to adapt to different environments for their habitation. And because of global warming, we can all conclude that we will soon be facing a severe shortage of food. Humans have always depended on food to survive. With a severe shortage of food, how can we stay alive? Our planet is also going through a time of bad pollution, and the longer that goes on, the more difficult will be a solution. Such circumstances then lead to our phase of poor health, which then increases our phase of poor mental health. Our homeless situation is getting worse and worse. I don't even know how to express such things in verse. But I would like to thank you all for putting up with me during most of all your meetings ever since April of 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you.
That's great.
Bill Miller, followed by Lee Pearson.
Good morning, Chair Hill, County Commission, staff and fellow residents. I'm Bill Miller, back from a long absence due to being sidetracked by that election last year, followed by the onslaught of data center proposals this year. More on that later. But for now, I'm glad to be back and to start once again by acknowledging and thanking you for accepting the county's sustainability plan created by Brian Beffert and Emily Stapleton. That took guts. Many of us realize and appreciate that voting in favor of plans that do not produce immediate results and, in fact, may not produce anything measurable for years is politically risky. For example, saying you've improved people's lives five years from now is not a compelling campaign argument, but you did it anyway, so thank you. Now we face a new challenge to our future most of us did not see coming: data centers and artificial intelligence. Just two years ago, for most of us, those were obscure concepts. To us, maybe, but not the boards of major tech corporations like Google, Apple, Microsoft, Meta, and Tesla, who have been quietly working behind the scenes to plan and implement these energy- and water-consuming behemoths. So while we were out comparing Energy Star appliances, they've been buying up square miles of land in Nevada for data centers that consume more electricity than small cities and nearly as much water. In return, they employ maybe a dozen people yet demand onerous tax abatements for offering Nevada next to nothing in return. Virtually from out of nowhere, we, the people of Nevada, are in a battle for our survival. The onslaught of data centers can conceivably consume all of our scarce resources and drive us out. According to MIT Technology Review, the currently proposed and approved data centers will increase northern Nevada's power grid by 40% and consume literally billions of gallons of water every year. And many more centers are on their way. To date, they have the advantage of surprise, which they played well, and the advantage of a disjointed political system where the buck never seems to stop anywhere. For us, our only advantage is having our backs against the wall. We must pull together or fall together. It is that simple. To prevail, we need to be united, creative, passionate, and committed. We can conceivably coexist, but only if the people come first. As it is, we are an afterthought. So again, I thank this commission for your foresight and ask you that it be extended to managing this existential threat to our exquisitely beautiful way of life in Nevada. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Lee Pearson, followed by De'Andre Burleson.
I live in the Horizon Hills subdivision, which is in the bottom right of this. There's a projected site called the Seneca Hills Business Park that they're trying to change the zoning on from residential to... It says here, "Specific Plan District Handbook," but I think that's more industrial than anything else. My deal is, they are saying on this report that they have a sanitary sewer report, but it takes place about a mile and a half from here. What they want to do is they actually want to tap into the Black Horizon Hills subdivision residential sewer system. And I'd like to know if somebody can look into that to find out... I've lived up there 20 years. I don't know if it's capable of handling that whole business park that's going to go in there. I don't know how you go about finding out who would look at it to find out if it's going to handle that. I don't know if that's a stop for... I just don't know. So I'm coming to you guys for help to find out, hey, how do I get this done? And who goes in there and actually looks in the ground and says, "This is not going to work. This is going to work." Because on paper, it looks really good. They just go on the computer, they look on the map, they say, "Oh, great, eight-inch line, no problem. It'll handle, you know, 11 billion gallons a minute." With this Horizon Hills subdivision, it was... The sewer system was built in '64, so the way it's designed is open pit, which means there's a manhole cover like this, and the sewer from the houses come out and just drops down into a pipe. There's no pipe connecting to it. So the pipe that takes the sewage away is just open. It's like chipped out on the top, and the sewage just falls down there, and it goes out, and then it goes across Virginia, and then it's all good. But they want to use that project site and our sewer system to kind of facilitate that. So if anybody could tell me or advise me on how or who I would speak to that can go out and actually get something, you know, feasibility study or something on it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Pearson, we'll connect you with a staff member and get those questions answered.
Oh, cool. Thank you.
I'll ask that the board also be included on that. Thank you.
All right.
De'Andre Burleson.
This is my current, I guess, active court case I have with Reno Municipal, and this is the attachments that's associated with this particular court case. This is the standard case summary I wanted to share with you through Reno Municipal. I have SNAP benefits. That's effective, I guess, in March, which doesn't mean too much of anything. $25 is what that is. I have eligibility for Nevada Medicaid, so whatever that is, you know. And the situation I want to present to you was that, with all that being said, I went to your Public Health Department, and I was denied services for a COVID-19 shot, immunization, and a standard STI/STD checkup because of the discrepancy of the benefits as far as Medicare, Humana, Blase. So I have not been able to be seen by a doctor because of that issue. So something I want to address, I want to stay abreast with you, you know, Blase, Blase. And so these are the cards that are associated with this particular situation. And the good news is that I did receive WellCare, so I'm excited about that as well. So other than that, all is well. I'm working on the housing authority to get my housing reinstated. I have an active case manager, court case. I have medical SNAP benefits and an active court case with Reno Municipal.
Thank you, Mr. Burleson. Did you get your COVID shot?
No, I didn't receive anything because she said it was medical, Humana, and I guess I had too many... Too many... I do not kook stuff, but kook stuff, so I'll see like a commercial and it'll say, "Today's Aetna Medicare. Give us a call, 1-800." Da-da-da-da. Or, "Today's Humana." And so I order all these different...
So did you connect with your Washoe County caseworker? Because I think they can help you with that.
No.
Can you call them?
He hasn't called me.
They haven't called you?
No. I'm still waiting on the bus pass from him at RTC Station.
Okay. Well, hopefully, we can have that staff member reach back out to you because we want to get you that shot.
All right. Sounds good.
So thank you for letting us know.
Okay. Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move into Item Four. Manager Brown.
Item Four is Commissioners and County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Thank you very much. Do you have anything for us?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. Vice Chair Herman.
No.
Okay. Commissioner Garcia.
Good morning. Hi, everybody. Good morning.
Good morning.
I wanted to bring up something that happened on Friday that was really exciting, and I think we should all be really proud of. As we know, we have Crossroads Men's Program, Crossroads Women's Program, we have Crossroads Women and Children's Program, and on Friday, I attended a ribbon cutting for our first Crossroad Families Program. And the building, if you're curious about, was purchased by Rise, a million-dollar grant was given to them from our opioid litigation, ironically. But it went to the purchase of this property on West Second Street, 1050 West Second Street. It's this beautiful old building, built in 1932, brick, and it's got a lot of bedrooms and bathrooms, and it's going to be perfect for our new families who will be entering into recovery together. So oftentimes, the mom is separated from her children, or the father is separated from his children. This will be the first time that we'll be able to serve our families together as they move through this journey. And if you haven't had a chance to listen to the wonderful podcast that our team did, it's a two-part series on our Crossroads Program, I really encourage you guys to look into it, learn about it. We're doing some amazing stuff that's putting us on the map nationally, and I think it's something that we should be celebrating regularly. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia, for pointing that out. And congratulations on the Biktopia event. It was a great event. Commissioner Andriola.
Thank you. I just wanted to share that the Tahoe Reno Regional Planning Agency is currently looking at planning and research for data centers as a regional approach. So I thought I'd share that information. And it's underway, and so if anyone has any feedback or interest in providing not only the information you would like to share, but more importantly, be a part of the process. I don't technically know when that is started, but our last meeting indicated that we were going to move forward with that planning, so I thought I'd share that with everyone.
Thanks for the update on that. So the Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning. No, just want to make sure so that they want to reach out.
It was Trekkie. Yes.
Okay.
Well, isn't Tahoe a beautiful place, though?
It is a beautiful place.
Maybe that's where I'd like to be on a beautiful day today. Maybe that was a subconscious, so it's actually the Trekkie. Yes, it's Trekkie Regional.
That's awesome.
The point is, is that there are folks that are way ahead of looking at what the impact is for our community, not only directly but regionally. And when I attended the conference for water, there was a lot of discussion... It was a national conference for water reuse, and there was a lot of discussion about data centers. So I think it's great that we're looking at the best practices that are happening not only across the nation but through studies and research, and so the planning is really engaged in not only the details but our specific region as well. And so that's what they do. That's their point, is creating master plans and making sure that everyone adheres to that. So I thought that information might be helpful.
Thank you. That's great. Great update.
Thank you.
I see Bill furiously writing it down. Okay. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had the opportunity to go out of town this holiday weekend. I went out to Winnemucca, and it was just really refreshing to see the big event they had out there. I get to meet the mayor out there, talk to the ender sheriff, and just a good family experience out there. And I want to encourage all folks that live in northern Nevada to explore our beautiful state, and there's festivals and opportunities and camping and hotels and restaurants and just... I encourage all of us that live here in Nevada to do a vacation here in our own state to help the local economy. So I just had a great time out there. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. All right. With that, if we don't have any other comments from board members, we will move into our presentations, 5A1. Manager Brown.
5A1. Item 5A1 is a presentation by 2024/2025 Washoe County Leadership Academy, participants on their class project focusing on earthquake preparedness.
Yay. Commissioner Garcia and I were able to go to this graduation. It was so great. Welcome, as was Wilson.
Yeah, good morning. Alexandra Wilson, for the record, with our community, our commissioner support team. I want to welcome our recently graduated 2025 class to present on their class project, Shake Safe Washoe, for their 2025 project called Earthquake Community Preparedness. I want to introduce Michael Feis, Charlie Nguyen, Dawson Deal, Tiffany Kress, and Libby DeHart, and they'll kick it off for you guys.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
All right. Hi, I'm Libby. I am one of the project co-leads with TIF. And a very common myth in Nevada is earthquakes are not something we have to worry about. I know a lot of us coming into this academy had the same misconceptions about the threat that it poses to Nevada. We're actually a very seismically active region. There's 30 faults that could cause damage. So many of us are unprepared when the big event does happen, and preparedness measures are lacking, leaving us vulnerable. And so we came up with a campaign strategy called Shake Safe Washoe. We wanted to highlight risk, share historical data, discuss the impacts to homes, infrastructure, daily life, help people know what to have in an emergency kit, how do they prepare their home for when this happens? And if it does happen, where do you go to get help? Where do you find access to resources on what to do afterwards? And so we came up with four different committees so that we could hit it from all different angles diversely. We have a research committee, we have written communications, we have an events committee, and we have our production committee. Thank you.
My name is Mike Feis. So my team was the research committee. It was the smallest team, but pretty good group that did some pretty amazing things. So the research committee basically answered as many research questions requested by the various groups. And then one of the main things we did is we came up with a batch full of questions to help support various initiatives. We had a trivia night, there was a social media engagement, a website, and anything else they could come up with where such questions would be useful for engaging our community. So we focused the questions on four different subjects. So we looked at earthquake history, preparation for what to do before an earthquake, what to do during an earthquake, and what to do after an earthquake.
All right. Good morning, I guess, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Dawson Deal, for the record, and I was the lead for the Written Communications Committee. So a couple of things that we focused on was trying to improve accessibility of the information on the emergency management webpage. So this included improvement to the readability and navigation of the page, including headers and summaries, clickable tables, more concise categories. If you've been on the emergency management page, there are multiple pages with tons of great information, but they're just really long pages with not a bunch of visual hierarchy. So we wanted to enhance the visual experience, so we're suggesting use of icons, accordions, and the availability of printable resources for easier use, either for private use in the home or for use at community events. And then also redesigning our homepage for action, including a mission statement, specific buttons for different information, and then the use of relocating critical links such as any emergency notifications, the perimeter map that is used for wildfires. And we also wanted to centralize key resources, so we wanted to create a one-stop hub for all of preparedness optimized for either web, mailers, and social media. And to get into that, if you guys have ever seen on social media, like you've ever used a link tree, they're very handy. It's just one page that has very clear titles of what information can be found where. So we want to have... We want to work with Washoe County to create this link directory that would include things like emergency management, how to make a plan for an emergency, how to assemble an emergency kit, evacuation information, shelter info, special needs assistance, et cetera. Next, the third thing that we were working on was a P A C billboard concept. So we wanted the messaging to be asking Washoe County residents if they were ready for an emergency, if they're currently thinking about it, if they've never thought about it, or if they're totally prepared to make sure that they are totally prepared. So we wanted the call to action to be making a plan and then providing that short link directory for them to access that information. And we were lucky enough to be able to secure the provision of a donated billboard space from Lamar Advertising Company, which does a lot of advertising in the area, pending billboard space availability and scheduling with the county. So just to give you a visual of what that might look like, we had some mock-up examples, and these are just concepts. The link that is shown on this is not active at this moment, but it is a vanity domain that we will be proposing the use of. So for the top one, we have disasters strike without warning. Will you be ready? Your family deserves a plan, and it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. So we're hoping that if and when these billboards get put up in the area, that it will, obviously with that striking backdrop and image of a family standing outside of a home that has been a little disheveled due to a possible earthquake, that people and families in our community will feel encouraged to prepare for their family if they have not already. Thank you.
Hi. I am actually one of the leads on this committee, but Priscilla, who was the lead on the events committee, could not be here today, so I'm presenting on her behalf. So Dawson and his committee did a really amazing job of clarifying that information, getting that information in a readily accessible formatting, and then also trying to get people to come see it. Ours was trying to make sure that we are meeting people where they are at, and where are people in Washoe but at sports games. So we partnered with the Nevada Seismology Lab and the hockey team here... Why am I spacing on their names? Sorry. ...to do a Shake Up Washoe Hockey Night. So, and the Ice Raiders. Aye. So we went to the Ice Raiders and had a game where we had an information table about earthquake preparedness. There was a raffle for a go-bag at the game, and then the Nevada Seismology Lab actually did... They registered activity on the ice rink and with the crowd with their kind of unique scale of measuring seismic activity at the game. The goal in mind is to do something fun with constituents from Washoe County to, again, bring that light or that... Sorry, earthquake preparedness to light. Again, a lot of times, the reason why people knew this information of standing in the doorway with an earthquake was because we had their attention during school. These people are not in school anymore. We need to find them where they are at, and where they're at is at sporting events. So the next steps are to continue those partnerships with the Nevada Seismology Lab and different sporting teams around town. We'd love to see this happen at the Reno Aces at a Nevada game and be able to measure those and maybe create a challenge of like, whose team can create the larger, like, quote-unquote earthquake?
Oh, yeah.
At the table, we had a 3D printable earthquake shaker where people could see what happens when you do or don't secure down your furniture in your household, your water heater, and they were able to kind of create an earthquake with that table. We would love to see those in schools, in libraries, in places where people can 3D print these and kind of use those to create lesson plans around earthquake preparedness. I'm going to give it up to the next committee because we're running out of time.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners. My name is Charlie Nguyen. I was the head of the Production and Social Media Committee. I helped lead the committee in a creation of a series of short public service announcements that were focused on earthquake safety and preparedness. We started by writing some scripts and storyboards to break down the essentials, safety information in short and easy digestible format. Each one covers things like how to prepare your home, what to do during an earthquake, where to find reliable updates. The goal was to make clear and concise, shareable content moving forward. The final product is eight short-form videos that could be shared either in preparedness weeks, on social media, or in real time during disaster recovery. Thank you so much.
Great.
Along with those, we also came up with an earthquake preparedness social media package that could be ready to go should and when an earthquake happens. So we are gifting this to the county so that you are ready to go next time an earthquake happens to direct people where to find that information. In conclusion, we packaged this all together, that cute little house QR code that is not broken down from an earthquake. You can follow that to find all of the information that we put together, all the resources that we have for you guys, and hopefully, we will see this project move forward with all the suggestions that were made by each of our committees. Again, our goal was to... The information's there, and something that we learned in the Leadership Academy is that the information's there. We just didn't know that it was there. We didn't know where to find it. So the goal is to make sure that everything is readily available for all the constituents of Washoe County so that we are Shake Safe Washoe.
Oh, I love it. Wow. And in the 10 minutes. Good job, team. That is amazing. And I just want to give the Leadership Academy a round of applause because they've given their time and their passion to Washoe County and... and their passion to Wausau County. And they chose to get involved by giving us, is it nine Fridays out of the year? And then you're working on this project outside of your personal life, your work life, and really committing to how to make your government better. And I'm just really inspired. So I don't know if we could just hear from each one of you what you got out of the academy. It would be helpful to, sorry to put you on the spot, but if you feel comfortable like saying anything about what you learned, or, you know, something that you took away from, for the academy, I think it'd be helpful for the board to hear how great the experience is, from what I hear from everyone who participated.
Good morning. Thank you, Mike Feese. So it was actually really, really amazing to actually visit with your staff, see that you have wonderful, wonderful humans who are passionate about their jobs. But it was also really impressive to see the breadth of work you guys do. The county is in every aspect of our life. They do so much, and so much behind the scenes, and they never ask for a thank you, so they do awesome.
That's great. Thank you for that. I agree. Anyone else want to add anything? No pressure if you don't want to.
I'll go for it.
Okay.
So I guess my understanding of Wausau County government beforehand was what I learned in government in high school. But I didn't realize the amount of compassionate programs that Wausau County has really put together for, like you spoke on Crossroads. And I think I speak for the whole class that the day that we went to see Crossroads and we saw the CARES campus, and we met with NAMS, and just learning all of the incredible ways that the county is trying to support our constituents, or their constituents with homelessness and drug abuse, and just ways that we're trying to better the humans that are living in our community is really incredible and support them. So I guess I just saw the other side of government, which is those compassionate support programs.
Sounds great. Thank you.
I'll add the other side, probably like a forgotten element is the connections and networking that you make. I moved to Reno about eight years ago. I've always worked from home, don't know a lot of people. So my dad was part of the Wausau County Leadership Academy before me, and thought it was fabulous. I was like, well, you know, I got to get out there, meet people, find ways to contribute to my community. So I joined it. And now, after eight years of living here, I know so much more. I learned about organizations I'd never heard of. I made friends I didn't know existed before this. And so I'm really grateful for everything I gained through that.
That's great. Yeah, that other side benefit of building community.
I'll share some thoughts. Hi again, Dawson Deal for the record. I'm a recent graduate of the University of Nevada. I graduated with a degree in political science, so this was super exciting for me.
Wow, congratulations.
I had internships with a United States Senator at the state level, at the legislature. So the local aspect was something, was exposure that I was certainly missing. And I thought it was incredible. As someone who wants to hopefully be an elected official one day, go serve my community, it got me really excited because I realized how much progress we've made and how many great programs there are, like Crossroads. I thought it was really neat to see how we get flushed toilet water into clean water that can be used in a household, not quite drinking water, but at least to help wash our hands, right? I thought that was really interesting. When we went over to see the medical examiner's office, that was really neat. Now every time I'm driving to school over Wells Avenue, I look to my right and I see the big freezers that store bodies, which is kind of cool. It's just really interesting. And those are things that I wouldn't have been able to know if I was not in this program. So it's been really neat. I think we all recognize that there's a lot of progress to go in our community, especially in very critical areas like our mental health programs and whatnot. But it was really inspiring. And so I hope to take everything that I've learned here, apply it to the work that I will be doing in the next few years as I build my career. But this exposure has been really great. I think this investment into our community and educating our constituents about how local government works and how it functions, like the return on investment is not even measurable. So I would really encourage you guys to keep this program going. We certainly have feedback for the staff that helped put it together, and we hope that it improves every single year, and that it can grow and have a greater impact across the community. But really appreciate you guys and for the county manager, and of course, the county commissioner's support staff for putting time and effort in approving this project. I think it's certainly worthwhile. And the immediate return on investment may not be seen right away, but it will in the future. I can assure you of that. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Last one.
I guess I'll finish this up. 30 years ago, I graduated from the Youth Leadership Long Beach Academy. And then about 10 years ago, I graduated from the Leadership Long Beach Academy. So within the last 20 years of being a representative of Burning Man, I've come to find Reno to be my home. And when I found out that Wausau County had a leadership program, I audited it. And, you know, I found a lot of ways to give back. There's a lot of citizen advisory boards that I feel like I could do a lot of good in. So I appreciate the time and efforts that Wausau County employees do. I mean, you guys do so much with so little, so I appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thank you. That's awesome. Well, I appreciate everyone sharing. And I'll go to the board to see if there's any other questions or comments. Commissioner Garcia.
Hi, Madam Chair. I think there's some other WCLA folks in the crowd. If you want to come up and share as well, I'm not calling you out back.
I saw Beck, and yeah.
But while you're walking up, if you want to share, there's some other folks. We welcome you to come up. I love that you touched on that last point. When I'm reviewing applicants for our boards and commissions and advisory, it always stands out to me that someone has already gone through the WCLA onboarding. You guys receive a better onboarding than we do as commissioners. It is so thorough and so comprehensive. And I just know that when you guys put your name into the hat for something, we're just going to get a real quality candidate. So then I just wanted to speak to the way you tackled this topic. You did it so comprehensively with the four different groups and angles. I think that's a really smart thing. And staff, February is Designated Earthquake Awareness Month, if we want to highlight anything on that month. But I attended a conference last week, and Bill Thomas from RTCs like saw something flash just in the middle of a transportation conference. It was one slide, and it was like about preparedness. And he goes, is there something I should know? But it was just weaved into just the regular conference slides. And I think us living in the region that we are with fire and earthquake potential, it would not be a bad idea to encourage our large conferences to weave in a slide or two to remind people on how to evacuate safely. And just to keep it front of mind, just like your billboard idea. I think it's really important because we're not in K-12 anymore. We're getting under our desks and constant reminder year after year.
Yeah, that's great. Do y'all want to add anything about your experience?
Okay. I'm really short. This always works out wonderful. I absolutely love everybody that I've met. And I've actually met people that I probably wouldn't have met without the Wausau County Leadership Academy. And we all like are cohesive in our own way because we all kind of bring something to the table. And one of the really neat things that we did, I know this probably sounds crazy, but we did a Clifton's Leadership Test before the academy started. That opened my eyes up to so much. And it's kind of amazing to learn how you have your different leadership styles. And you can work together with people very different than you. And you kind of find that medium ground of how to work together. I don't think we ever had a conflict. If people didn't agree, they talked it out. And it was one of the neatest things. We had a whole lesson on how to work together within a leadership capacity or within the government. And I loved it. It's something that you don't see every day, and I love the positivity it brought. And then I also learned that you don't go to a doorway during an earthquake. That was like blew my mind when we weren't supposed to do that. I had no clue. I didn't grow up where there was earthquakes. So I was like, oh, I had no clue. So I learned a lot, and I made some really wonderful friends. And I got to see so much that Wausau County has to offer, but has to do. They have so much to do with very little, and it just makes me happy. So thank you, guys. And this is the most amazing, rewarding program out there.
And for the record, if you could just say your name, that would be great.
It's Beck Marco.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Heather Boland. And I just want to say that I have lived in Wausau County now for 10-plus years, worked 15. So I never knew what Wausau County was. I'm not a political science person. I don't have any political aspirations. However, just as an ordinary citizen who sees from the back, the hardworking, the, I manage a senior elderly housing complex here in town for VOA. And I see a lot of the after effects. And to go home and be so excited about the new aspect that we learned, and honestly, I was super excited about going to the coroner's office, unfortunately. But bringing it home and sharing it with every single person that came across my path, they were just like, oh, all right, it's a Friday again. You're going to come home, and you're going to tell me about all this stuff, the things that I never, ever, ever would have known if you hadn't have done this class. I hope you guys continue doing this class every year because it does. It gets the word out. It gets it out to the people that never would enter this arena. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you say your name? I'm so sorry for the record.
It's Heather Boland.
Thank you, Heather.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Leo Haryshny. Thank you, Mary Luz Garcia. You're part of the reason why I'm here. But even before that, going back to Katie Holland and Katie Simon, I was in the first class of the Wausau County, I was one of the first class of the Wausau County Leadership Academy. And I came into hearing about this, or learning about this through issues that I had at the time, I don't remember how long ago it was that it was that long ago, but with illegal dumping. And so I was able to get a program together that the Wausau County did not pick up on, the BLM had actually picked up on. So even though what we gain and what we take out or take away from while participating in this, it's always good as a citizen, as someone who wants to participate, as someone who wants to make your community better, whether you actually can or you can't, you have the opportunity, you have a chance to make your voice heard, and you do have opportunities to, you know, give back in participating in boards or the Cabs or so forth. And that's always good to be seen, to know that you have the chance to not just be a resident of the community, but a participant in the community.
That's great. Thank you.
So thank you again for the academy. I appreciate it.
Wow. Well, I'm inspired by all of you. Vice Chair Herman, do you have anything? Anything else? Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Andrea?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend your graduation, but I couldn't, or I would have been there. So I feel obliged to extend my deepest apologies, but congratulations. I also think you should mark your calendars for October 16th, 2025. It's part of the International Day, and we'll have the Great Nevada Shakeout. And I don't need to tell you what that's about. Thanks for looking at earthquakes. It's something that you had already shared in or well-versed in in terms of not feeling that it really is a problem, right, in terms of our location. And it is. So I love the Great Nevada Shakeout. There's a lot of fun things, and I hope we can see you all out there shaking it out on October 16th of 2025 around the world since it's international shakeout. I also really want to say how much you all are carrying with you as being advocates. You know, we get asked, I'm sure all of us get asked a lot, you know, well, what does Wausau County do? And it's like, how much time do you have, right? It's a wide breadth. I don't need to share that with y'all. And I think it's important that you walk away as you are in your own individual way, but more importantly, look at how you can share a lot within not only the, you know, the sphere of influence you have with your immediate friends, but those new friends. And don't let it go. Because as time goes, sometimes things seem to just dissipate, not intentionally, but that's just life. So if you want, I'll remind you of the Great Nevada Shakeout every year. That's been going on for a long time. And the tools and resources that you've provided are great. And I really just want to thank you for your time and your continued advocacy of sharing the great work that Wausau County does, along with all the other jurisdictions in a regional approach, including the Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Management Authority that I messed up really bad. I hope I don't get in trouble since I'm the chair of that. Isn't that sad?
You're on too many boards.
I really am. 11 boards. So the fact is, is that you all should be commended for your time, dedication, and the fact that you're giving back the tools that will help everyone. It's not just one program. It's everyone because earthquakes don't discriminate, nor do any type of disasters discriminate. And also, the preparedness piece. You don't want to be in an emergency situation and then be learning on the job, if you will, how to save your life. So being able to stand formed, you know, have you guys heard this? Stand formed, make a plan, build a kit. So that's my Red Cross Regional CEO coming out. I can't help it. The other thing that I'd like to share with everyone, including you, I hope you can make the Spanish Springs Cab. We're doing a build-a-kit in a few months in terms of preparedness. So it would be great to include some of the data and QR code and information that you shared at our Spanish Springs Cab. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And congratulations on your graduation. And thank you for giving us a nice report. Good luck to you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you all. I know you all have jobs. So thank you for taking the time this morning to present to us. And we look forward to working with you in the future and seeing you around town. All right. Thank you. Manager Brown will now move into 5B1.
Item 5B1 is a presentation by Dr. Laura Knight regarding an update on the current status of the Wausau County Regional Medical Examiner's Office, innovative and collaborative programs in the office, and a summary of key data over the past several years regarding deaths in Wausau County.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Dr. Laura Knight. For the record, thank you for the opportunity to speak today, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. I have some slides up there. Let's go to the next one. So the Wausau County Regional Medical Examiner's Office really aims to be the regional center of excellence in death investigation. Our statutory jurisdiction is Wausau County, and that's by county code and state statute as well. But we also serve 18 additional counties in northern Nevada and in California. And those other counties don't have the population to support having their own medical examiner's office. So we really provide that vital service in this region. That brings in about $1.6 million in annual revenue. So our beautiful facility that we operate in opened in 2017. We have a fleet of five scene response vehicles, including one of the county's first electric vehicles, which we're very proud of. And as well as in our fleet, we have six mass fatality trailers, and those have varying sizes and capabilities. We are meeting industry benchmarks, which means that more than 90% of our autopsy reports are completed and finalized within 60 days or less. And we are about to be nationally accredited. We have applied for national accreditation through the National Association of Medical Examiners. We've submitted all our required documents, and we're just waiting for our onsite inspection to complete that. And that's been really about a decade dream for the office. It's part of why the new building was needed, so that we could become accredited. And that is on the horizon. Our most valuable resource, of course, though, is our 39 employees, the person power that makes our work really possible. We have 10 intermittent hourly death investigators. We also have 18 full-time medical legal death investigators and autopsy technicians. They both go to death scenes and help us with our autopsies. And that includes folks from line investigators to lead positions, as well as supervisory positions. We also have a small but very mighty administrative staff of three. That includes our transcriptionists who type our autopsy reports and who manage death certificates for us. We also have a couple of grant-funded positions for an applied forensic epidemiologist that we're recruiting shortly, as well as a data specialist who's been with us for several years on federal grants in putting national violent death data to those databases to help with prevention efforts. And finally, we have an indispensable operations manager, and as well as five medical examiners. We have three assistant medical examiners, a deputy chief, and myself as chief medical examiner. And they are all licensed physicians who are board-certified forensic pathologists. So what we do, I'll try to keep this brief so we can get to some data. But what we do does comprise quite a lot. We investigate all sudden deaths, deaths by violence or trauma, and others in Wausau County. We provide death scene responses 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, rain or shine, holiday, and whatnot. By statute, we are the ones to provide the notification to the next of kin of death. We perform scientific identification in people who can't otherwise be identified due to the state that their remains are in. We perform autopsies and other specialized exams, including x-rays. And you'll see an example of an x-ray that we took with our LowDoc Stat Scanner X-Ray System in our office. office. As far as examination goes, we do about anywhere from 1,150 to up to about 1,400 body examinations a year. The majority of those are complete autopsies, and the caseload just varies. And then we do operate independent of any parallel investigation by law enforcement, and I think that's important for the public to know, that we are an independent agency. We certify the cause and manner of death on the death certificate for all non-natural, as well as some natural deaths in Washoe County. We provide a lot of really important data for death prevention efforts, and we do produce an annual report on deaths in our county and in our region, as well as a lot of additional specialized reports, such as our substance abuse report that comes out quarterly that provides information to the Substance Abuse Task Force. And we hope to provide more sophisticated data when we have our forensic epidemiologist on board. We're very excited about having that additional capacity, because analyzing data and providing these reports isn't really a statutory responsibility, it's just something that's important for our community to do. And so to be able to add that resource is fantastic for us. And then this last slide is some of the other things that people maybe don't think of. We manage unclaimed bodies in our county. We facilitate and authorize organ, eye, and tissue donation. We provide expert court testimony, both in criminal prosecutions as well as civil lawsuits involving wrongful deaths. We very frequently have to interact with the media because of the public nature of a lot of the deaths that we deal with. We provide education and training to a lot of people, from our other coroners in other counties to law enforcement, medical students who rotate at our office, and lots of others. And then we also have the responsibility to be ready, to be prepared for mass fatality events. So we plan and resource for that, make sure we have the resources in place before something happens. We educate around that, and we finally exercise regularly, at least two exercises a year. Looking at some data now, the annual deaths reported to the Washoe County Regional Medical Examiner's Office, you can see, have really skyrocketed over the years. And that's, you know, both due to increases in population, as well as changes in the death investigation system. In 2007, we became a medical examiner office instead of a coroner office, and you can see there was a steep rise, as there was some education in the community about what deaths should be reported. And then you can look, we peaked in caseload in 2021 with the pandemic, of course, with the excess mortality from COVID-19. We've seen some recovery in numbers since then, but it really hasn't come back down, unfortunately, because of the drug epidemic, and we're still seeing a lot of those deaths. Looking at our death investigator scene responses, this means scenes that our death investigators went out to, investigated, photographed. We've seen quite an increase over the years, recent years in that. We've seen a small decrease from 2023 to 2024 that I would attribute to a small decline in drug-related deaths that we've seen, and I'll show you a slide on that. Looking at our deaths by manner of death over the last six years, you can see, looking at natural deaths, there is a peak in 2021. Again, that's from the pandemic. But more striking, I think, is the steady increase in accidental deaths that extended up until 2023, and that is related to the drug epidemic, and these are mostly methamphetamine and fentanyl deaths. We've seen some modest increases as well in suicides and homicides. Looking at some specific types of death, we do have a high number of suicides in Washoe County and Nevada in general. It's definitely a preponderance of men over women, and that is a nationwide statistic as well. Seniors account for more than a third of suicides and are overrepresented in Washoe County as well as our whole state. The most common method is firearms. Homicides also have a male preponderance and are most commonly due to firearms. The age range is a little bit different. We see more adults in the middle span of their lives that are involved in homicides, and we had 47 in 2024. For drug-related deaths, I did mention we had a small decline from 360 deaths in 2023 down to 283 last year. That's a real decline, but still, we had 283 drug-related deaths, so it is certainly still a significant problem. This is another category of death that has a male preponderance, and most common, the most common single drug we see is methamphetamine, and then followed by fentanyl is the second most common, but we often see the two being used together. Shifting gears from deaths, just to talk a little bit about dollars. The budgeted revenue for our office has steadily increased over the years as we have increased, as our cost goes up, our fees have to go up to other counties. So we've increased the, the revenue from our inter-local agreements with other counties. We also have multiple grants that we've had over the years, as well as our partnership with Nevada Donor Network to use some of our space for tissue procurement. That's part of the design of the building, actually. And so you can see that we have tried to be as self-supporting in our budget as we can. The steep increase you see for fiscal year 2025 is because of a large opioid response grant that's going to pay for our forensic epidemiologist, as well as some other operating expenses and staff. Last minute, I'm gonna try and get through these last two slides. Really, our goalposts and guideposts in our office are innovation, efficiency, and collaboration. Those three things allow us to operate the most efficiently that we can and, and with our community in mind. An example of innovation in our office would be our LowDoc's x-ray scanner, which replaced or saves, rather, one to two full-time employees a year because of the speed with which we can do x-rays. That was added on grant, and were placed on grant. We got a refurbished unit, and that's why we needed to replace it so, so soon. That was anticipated, but both times on grant, so we're very excited about that. We also extensively collaborate with data collection for drug-related deaths, suicides, and other state mortality reviews, and collaborate extensively with UNR, and I won't read you all of those things, but with medical students, our fac, our medical examiners or faculty, we do research with UNR Med as well as the Anthropology Department, and we're excited about having that, that academic connection, and hopefully will allow us to have a fellowship program to train future forensic pathologists and keep those in the state. And my last slide is about organ and tissue donation, which you all have heard me talk about before, but the data speaks for itself. We really are making a difference in Nevada with organ and tissue donation, and we are very proud that we collaborated on 42 organ donation cases last year. And that is it for my slides. Thank you. I'll answer any questions happily.
Thank you so much, and I am just inspired by the work that you and your team do. Mr. Norton gave me a great tour a few years back when I first started as a Commissioner, and seeing the staff who are really passionate about this work, but it is tough work. When I walked through, there was a staff member who was transcribing and crying. I mean, that is, it's, it's really emotionally heart-wrenching, and so I just, I hope you can take back to your team how much we appreciate their work and really, we, hopefully they feel seen by the Board and that, you know, they are making a difference. So thank you for inspiring that as well.
I will take that back. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Vice Chair Herman?
I'd just like to thank you very much for your hard work, and, and I double up on what the Chair said. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garcia?
Excellent presentation. The data was eye-opening, and, you know, your team, your media interactions are, you know, great, but you've also, in my experience on the Commission, handled really small, like, family issues or personal issues really, really well. So Justin, thank you for helping connect the dots on, on many of those situations. So I just wanted to highlight the excellent communication that comes out of your team. I think you're saving lives, and you're also investigating deaths. And to Commissioner Chair Hill's point, can you talk to us about what you do to keep these 39 FTE, almost 40 people on your team, healthy and sound in, in this difficult job that you do? It's hard enough to read the headlines, but to be really involved personally and then have to relive it in the courtrooms oftentimes, can you talk to us about what you provide in terms of training or support?
Yes. Thank you for bringing up that point, Commissioner Garcia. We do have a pretty robust wellness program in our office, and we are national leaders on that. We've spoken at national conferences about wellness, because it is kind of a relatively new topic in the coroner and medical examiner world, unfortunately, really only for about the last five years. And some of the things that we do, we have a counselor on contract who is available for emergency situations. We have that counselor also come in and do what he is trained to do, which is critical incident stress management debriefings after we have particularly terrible incidents. And, you know, my staff go to baby deaths every day, and my staff go to suicides every day. So what qualifies for them as a particularly terrible incident is something they have a personal connection to. You know, whether they know the person, or whether they just can really empathize, they have someone in their family that it reminds them of, or it's other first responders that maybe passed away, like, for example, the Medicare flight that we had. Those can be really difficult personally to deal with, and you have to go on and do your job. And so we really need that extra support to have, to have the counselor come in. We also have funding through restricted funds from the death certificate fees by Nevada Revised Statute that the legislature thankfully passed for us a few years ago. And that allows us to put on some programs that cost money that do help people, you know, to be able to learn about burnout and vicarious trauma before it happens, and recognize the signs, and know what to do for it, as well as doing, you know, some things that are just refreshing to the soul. I will, I will bring this up, I may regret it, but Baby Goat Yoga has been a favorite of, of our staff. They love doing that, and it's something that's very minimal cost, but it's a team builder, and it's so refreshing. So yes, we have our eye on that wellness issue, because we want to retain our employees, we don't want them to burn out and turn over, and we did, did see some of that during the pandemic, and so we really learned from that and said, you know, we have, we have to really focus on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Andriola?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Knight, for leading a great organization, and I too even remember the tour, that everyone was so gracious, and I too thought, that's such a tough situation. And thank you, Commissioner Garcia, for asking the question, and thank you for sharing. I had asked that question, actually, during the tour, and so I, I really also want to congratulate, congratulate you in advance, but it's, you're down, you're down the wire, right? For the accreditation, so kudos to all the hard work. It's not an easy lift, and so thank you for that. I do have a question. Do you see any grant funding in jeopardy as there's changes that seem to be occurring in various ways? And I was just curious if you could speak to that.
Yeah, I'm watching that very closely, because we do have federal grants, but so far, our realm of federal grants has not been touched by any executive orders or, or other concerns, and our grants don't seem to touch on any of the key areas that have been the target of executive orders. So I anticipate that hopefully things will be okay, fingers crossed, but I'm also watching it closely, and there's a consortium of forensic science organizations that collaborates with the name, the, you know, the professional organization for my specialty, and so we get regular briefings and updates, and, and I'm, I'm watching it closely, and you'll probably be the first to know if, if we're gonna lose some grants and have to take action on that.
Thanks. Thanks for the clarification. I, I also just want to close in, in terms of the appreciation for even the family reunification when those, I, I, why don't you speak to that? I, I remember that discussion in the room that you have in your location. I think sometimes we don't think about that, that bringing families in, and, and even the training and the compassion, and the reality of very, very, probably the hardest discussion one could ever have. And so would you mind speaking to how, how that works?
Yeah, I mean, my staff have an incredibly tough job to talk to people on, on the, what's often the worst day of their lives. They've lost a loved one, or they're finding out that it was their loved one that passed. And we do have, as you mentioned, the special family rooms at our office. Thank goodness for the new office, because in our old building, you know, we had one room that was a combination conference room, break room, meeting with families room. It's wonderful to have the dedicated space that's set aside. It's in the front of the office in the lobby. It's private, and it's away from our work, and we're able to meet with them there. And, you know, families come into our office for everything from picking up property from their loved one, to finding out whether someone might be their loved one, to make an identification looking at a photograph we've taken of their face. And those are really, probably the, I would say that's the hardest part of our job to me. And, you know, some of my staff might give the different answers, because they do that every day, but when I talk to family members when I have to come out, especially if I'm explaining what happened to their child, or, you know, complicated autopsy findings, it's, it's hard. I've cried with families, and I, you know, and I think that's okay. I think that's part of being human.
Thank you. And again, thank you to you and everyone, because I think that we all know to a certain extent some of the things that you do, but just the topic that you spoke with is really deeply, probably out of the sight and mind of us as a community, and that is a reality. So thank you to your staff. Thank you for all your hard, hard work, and thanks for caring about the mental health aspect of the team as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for the good work you're doing, and thank you for the report, and especially thank you to your staff if you relay that message. I think you're doing a great job, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. I will let them know.
Well, looking forward to continuing to support your office. Let us know if you need anything, and we'll continue to push out that organ and tissue donation message, because that's super important.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Have a great rest of your day.
You too.
Okay. We are now going to move into our donations. Commissioner Garcia, if you could help us with that?
Of course, Madam Chair. Today, I moved to approve donations for dog and cat food and monetary donations with special thanks to Petco Love and the SPCA.
Thank you very much, and I'm looking for a second on that.
One second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. And Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
Uh, there is nobody signed in.
Okay.
For six.
Is that for six? No.
No.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And it's on your screen. Thank you very much. The motion passes unanimously. We'll now move into our consent items. Are there any changes, Mr. Manager, to consent by the team?
I have none.
Okay. And any Commissioners who want to pull an item? I'm not hearing any. So, Madam Clerk, any public comment on consent?
We do have a couple of speakers. Neil Scott Jones?
Good morning, good afternoon, or good morning, I should say. Thank you for taking the time to hear me. I'm Neil Jones, and I am currently on the Open Space and Regional Parks Board, and I am up for reappointment. Two years ago, you humbled me and honored me by voting me onto the Parks Board. I take my position very seriously when I'm on this board. I am now the current Chair of the Board. I have a passion for parks, and I always have, from my childhood to my adulthood and my retirement. I worked for California State Parks for six and a half years as a land surveyor, and that was after my first retirement. And then I was in private practice until my second retirement a few short years ago. As Chair for the Parks Board, I have a vision to steer the Parks Department into a financially sustainable position, not just for the next few years, but for the next 30 years. Now, obviously, you're gonna be thinking, well, how are you gonna do that? Just right here. Here are the three policy documents from the City of Napa. They are financial sustainability, capital investment, and social equity. I requested these documents from their Park Planning Director, and she has graciously sent me these policy documents. Now, you might think, why the City of Napa? Well, just a few short years ago, their department was in serious financial condition. And utilizing these policy documents, they are now financially sustained, and they have a, a well-funded Parks Department, and they are moving ahead. Now, I'm not saying that these are perfect, but this is a real success story. We can take these documents and read them, and we can make serious decisions based on these policy decisions. We cannot afford even one bad decision. These policies are a great start to financial sustainability, and as you know, just getting started on the right track can be the hardest part. For example, a program that needs to be subsidized would be for children's swimming lessons for the underprivileged. We need to waterproof our young people. At the other end of the spectrum would be a master swim program where they could actually pay for the facility during their time in the pool. This is along the lines of what is for the common good and the individualized interest. Thank you for listening to me. I'm Neil Jones, and I would appreciate your consideration for reappointment to the Parks Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Robert Flick?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Robert Michael Flick. I'm here to seek reappointment to the Planning Commission. My motivation is pretty simple. I am a combat veteran- I am a combat veteran Marine officer. When my wife and I moved to this community from California, we both noticed that we have never been treated so well by not only the county government, but also by the citizens that we didn't even know. And we both decided that, you know, if we could give back to the community, we should do that. And so my background is rather varied, but I have spent several years on a city council in the city of Vista, California. I was the first elected mayor there. I've served on the Planning Commission there and I served on some regional boards there dealing with sewer and the federal government and grants and, and others. So I felt that this experience, being in a public position, being able to try to make a difference, make the community better, can be applied here if you wanted it. Like I say, we're so deeply touched by how we were received here that it's, it's really hard to explain. I mean, we were in restaurants and, and people on a table over here sent their little boy over here just to meet me. I mean, I didn't even know what the heck to say. So we love this area. This is our home. Unfortunately, it's just my home. My wife recently passed away. And I might add, the, the medical examiner's office did a fantastic job and that was not easy. So I feel that I could give something back to this community for what, in exchange for what they've shown to me. And I've been through annexations. I know what public meetings are about. I know the, sometimes they get a little out of hand and sometimes the press gets out of hand. But in the final analysis, you do what's best for the community and follow the law. And if the community doesn't like that, then they go to you folks to change it, not me. So thank you. I appreciate your reconsideration.
Thank you, Mr. Flick. That's great.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, well, if there aren't any board comments, I am looking for a motion on consent.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve 7.8.1 through 7. D. 5.
Thank you very much. Looking for a second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And Madam Vice Chair, do you have a block vote for us today?
Eight, 10, and 11, and that's in form of a motion.
Thank you very much. I am looking for a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner Andriola. All right, we have a motion by the Vice Chair and then a second by Commissioner Andriola. And Madam Clerk, any public comment on those items?
On these three items, there is none.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And it should, maybe come on the screen. There it is. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move into item nine and this is a first reading. So Madam Clerk?
If introduced, this will be bill number 1930, an ordinance amending Washoe County Code Chapter 100 Buildings and Construction to update the additions of specialized or uniform codes adopted by reference.
Thank you very much and welcome, Ms. Mullen.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Members of the Commission. Kelly Mullen, Planning and Building Division Director, here to present this morning an introduction and first reading for some updates to our building code. And I will also, while, while we're up here, introduce Mr. Ed Coker. He is one of our plans examiners with the building program. So for those who may not be familiar with Chapter 100 and our building code, we do update this on a relatively regular basis. We are coming today to update the additions that are adopted by reference. Those are for specialized and our uniform building codes. And when those are updated, we generally do so in coordination with the other Northern Nevada jurisdictions. For those who may not be familiar with international codes themselves, they are a set of minimum life safety building codes. The international codes are adopted in many jurisdictions across the United States. They are updated on a regular basis to learn from recent disasters, from new technology, new construction materials. Those international codes are released every three years, but our region generally adopts them every six years on a six-year cycle to reduce disruption to the industry. The last additions that we adopted were in 2018. These changes would adopt the 2024 codes. And it also includes some Northern Nevada amendments that are specific to our region. If they are adopted, it would include a six-month grace period. They would go into effect July 1, where clients, customers would be able to choose from either the 2018 or the 2024 codes with full implementation January 1 of next year. The additions that are shown on the screen are what are proposed to be updated along with the relevant appendices. Those are in the, in the staff report as well. It includes our building code, residential code, existing building code, energy conservation, fuel, gas, mechanical, wildland, urban interface, and swimming pool and spa codes, in addition to our mechanical plumbing, electrical codes, and National Fire Protection Association codes. This has been a collaborative process over the last 18 months with those other jurisdictions throughout Northern Nevada. You can see some of those other jurisdictions on the screen. It includes the cities of Reno and Sparks. We also had dozens of contractors, developers, builders, who were all part of that process. It included seven subcommittees, one steering committee to get to the Northern Nevada amendments that are being proposed for adoption as well. And those specific adjustments for our region are to make sure that the changes reflect and support our climatic and geographic characteristics specific to Northern Nevada. So today we are asking for you to introduce and conduct that first reading, set a second reading for June 10th. Available for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work on this. This is exciting. I have a quick question on the, the WUWE kind of codes for home hardening. Are we also looking at a separate track to look at maybe doing more intense requirements? We, Commissioner Clark and I were at the Arrow Creek, Arrow Creek HOA plus a bunch of other HOAs in the South Meadows discussing, you know, all the ways that they can look at fire prevention living in the WUWE. And I don't know if the staff are undergoing any other additional conversations on that.
So I will say that within building, we adopt Chapter 5 of the, of the Wildland Urban Interface Code and the fire districts adopt the remainder of, of those additions. So that is something that I know that the fire districts are looking at and specifically Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, that they do intend to be bringing that forward to the Board of Fire Commissioners for adoption. That is certainly something that we talk about with them on a pretty regular, regular basis. And, you know, one of the things that we interface with the fire districts on is looking at whether or not there is conforming water as well as distance, if there's sufficient defensible space on each property. And then that leads into what the building construction type needs to be, what those hardening requirements are.
Great. Well, thank you for that. Thanks for looking into that and keeping abreast of the important changes we need to make. Vice Chair Herman, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Garcia and Commissioner Andriola?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just really want to put this in perspective. You know, you listed all those groups. That is a lot of work. That is a lot of time and a lot of robust discussions, depending on what the changes are in the international code. And I just really wanted to thank you and, and thank you for all of the work that you do in planning. It's, it's funny to see that list and, and know the hours and hours that goes into that and the collaboration of all the jurisdictions and sometimes the uniqueness of those jurisdictions that may want to actually look at something. And then even coming to professional compromise on, on what's going to be adopted. So I just really wanted to put this in perspective. I say that because a long time ago, I was part of that. And it is really an interesting process, especially when you come back on a steering committee. So I really, really appreciate all of the hard work that went into less than 10 minutes of you talking, hours and hours. I, I also do want to just thank you two for clarifying the point about fire and, and that. So I think that that's really helpful because some of those codes actually do have crossover like that. So it's really helpful that you clarified that. So thank you, Madam Chair, for asking that question and thank you for, again, all of your hard work.
Thank you. And Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your report and it's good information. And I, I like the fact that we've got a grace period that'll give folks an opportunity to, to not be caught off guard and have something change without, without them having the opportunity to be a little more flexible in what their plans are and how the county's going to enforce this. So thank you.
All right. Well, Madam Clerk, any public comment on this item?
There's nobody signed in.
Okay. Well, this is a first reading. It is bill 1930. I'm looking for someone to help us read this.
Madam Chair, I'll move to introduce and conduct a first reading of bill number 1930, provided by, which is an ordinance amending Washoe County Code Chapter 10 Buildings and Construction to update the additions of specialized or uniform codes adopted by reference and to set the public hearing for a second reading and possible adoption on June 10, 2025.
Great. Well, we'll see you in June. Thank you both. We'll now move into item 12. Manager Brown?
Item 12 is a discussion and direction to staff regarding legislation or legislative issues proposed by legislators by Washoe County or by other entities permitted by the Nevada State Legislature to submit bill draft requests or such legislative issues as may be deemed by the Chair or the Board to be of critical significance to the county. Pending legislative bills can be located at the county website. Due to time constraints inherent in the legislative process, a list of specific bills that staff will seek direction from the commission on during this item will be posted on the website under Government Affairs. Due to the rapid pace of the legislative session, additional bills upon which comment may be sought from the Board of County Commissioners will be posted as soon as known. And Madam Chair, given that we're in the home stretch here, cadence, Ms. Matievich is not able to be with us. She did send some notes that I'd like to share with the
That would be wonderful.
The Board in terms of a status update as of today. Obviously, this is the final week of legislative session. The last day is next Monday, June 2. Wednesday, May 28 is the deadline for exempt bills to be passed out of committee. She expects that they will waive the rules for a handful of bills, particularly emergency measures introduced by the Senate Majority Leader and by the Speaker. 1,194 bills and resolutions have been introduced to date. Seven bills have been signed by the Governor. 54 bills are awaiting action by the Governor. The Governor has vetoed one bill and that's AB 306. Washoe County is currently tracking 521 bills or BDRs and that excludes the dead bills and has completed 240 fiscal notes to date. SB 319, which is the fire consolidation study, did pass both houses and is awaiting enrollment and delivery to the Governor. AB 333, which is the Washoe County Fairgrounds Lease Amendment, has passed out of both houses and is awaiting enrollment and delivery to the Governor. At the 311 BCC meeting, the Board did adopt a position to support that bill. AB 597 was introduced yesterday as an emergency measure for Speaker Jaeger. The bill relates to voting in primary elections, including the presidential preference primary. Staff is in the process of reviewing the bill to identify if the county would have any challenges or implementing, in implementing this provisions of this bill. She just hasn't completed that analysis yet. And as soon as we know, we will share that information with the Board. That concludes the update, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. And I know Commissioner Garcia wanted an update on the, our, our position that we took on the recount and I don't know if we have yet. Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I received a message from staff that she'll get that to us at a later time.
Oh, wonderful.
There's a lot of election bills. I did not realize that until my briefing on Friday. So we'd love to get an update.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you very much. Okay, Vice Chair Herman, do you have anything? Okay. Commissioner Andriola?
I serve on another board and I had mentioned that to the equivalent of Ms. Matievich that we need to get Red Bull. So I received a call this morning, asked if we were going to be sending Red Bull to her. I just really want to extend, can you please let her know? We appreciate all of the hard work because she is down to the wire and there is like 48 hours in a day, not 24 at this point. So we appreciate all of her hard work.
Yes. And what we don't hear of are all the bills that have not moved forward because of the work behind the scenes to ensure that there's not additional unfunded mandates. So, Commissioner Clark?
No comment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will move into our final public comment. Manager Brown?
Item 13 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters on and off the commission agenda. Unused time may not be allocated to other speakers. Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments that be made to the commission as a whole and virtual public comment may be taken when facilities are available.
Madam Clerk?
There's nobody signed in.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move into our final commissioner manager announcements. Manager Brown?
All right. Item 14 is Commissioners and County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include Boards and Commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Do you have anything else for us, Manager Brown?
I do, Madam Chair. Since we've been here, it's been shared with me that there are in fact two board openings. One is on the Board of Equalization, which has three seats available. Those will be closing on June 20. The second is the Board of Adjustment, District 4, and those applications are due by May 30.
Great. Thank you. Vice Chair Herman, anything else?
Yes.
Okay.
Some time ago, I asked for a, an annual budget report for the Leadership Academy. I'd still like to see that.
Okay.
And I'm just, as a representative of our Cabs, I would like to have them have the ability of having, giving us a presentation, maybe the officers of the different Cabs.
Oh, yeah.
And give them some representation on our Board.
That would be great. Okay. Thank you. I'll work on those items. Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Andriola?
I just wanted to share, and it's kind of, it's, it's, did I have a three-day weekend?
I know. That's how I felt all morning.
I had a three-day
Struggle.
Okay. I might need the Red Bull, but honestly, I absolutely appreciate all of the folks who put in their applications for boards, whatever it might be. I know that it's been amazing for me to be able to call every single applicant and learn so much. So for instance, I got to hear Mr. Jones in terms of his plan and looking at the dedication he has and looking at Napa and then getting information, looking at he has and looking at Napa and then getting information, looking at sustainability for parks and the dedication by Dr. Robinson and Ryan Brown, who were appointed to manage wildlife. If I could share those conversations and what their plans and their dedication and learning, at least from their perspective, independent of each other, that they feel that they have put that board, even in a statewide where folks listen, state agencies listen because they know it's the Washoe County Board and representing and the work that they put in. Mr. Flick, in terms of his commitment, I spoke with him. Mr. Horsey, I've spoken with everyone. And the dedication of everyone who is serving, I think, needs to be commended, whether it's the cab, whatever it might be. And I would really encourage everyone to continue to spread the good news about the applications that are open. And the more applicants you have, the better quality, to be honest. And I've just seen nothing but great applications and I just wanted to commend everyone for all the hard work. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of time. It's not something that you would just do for the sake of exchange of the high-dollar stipend that you receive, but really the dedication for making a difference to our community. So I just really want to thank everyone. I have a whole stack of additional calls and I'm telling you, like, it makes my day being able to call everyone and hear about what they believe the Board is doing right, what they believe the Board might look at in terms of what the challenges are, and then what their contributions and how they see them lifting that particular board in a very positive way. So I just wanted to spend the time and say thank you to everyone.
That's great. Commissioner Clark?
No comment. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for a great meeting. It is 11:31 and we are adjourned.